Good evening and welcome to the February 18th, thank you, committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to start the meeting with a call to order and we have trustee Baxter.
Good evening.
Vice Chair Oliver.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Gray.
Yes, hello, everyone.
Trustee Danielle Lee.
Thank you, why I'm here.
Trustee Shuttleworth, good evening, everybody. Trustee Rocha.
Hello.
And trustee Bryden.
Hello.
Thank you. We have not heard regrets from trustee Ahmed or trustee Amos, so I assume they will be joining us later. This evening, we will have trustee Shuttleworth.
Also here, sorry.
Oh, thank you, Shin Yi, thank you very much. Tonight, trustee Shuttleworth will be reading the traditional land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We begin by acknowledging the land and our responsibility to care for and respect all that provides us with life. This land upon which the HTSB is situated is on the ancestral treaty entitled lands of the Anishinaabe Ojibwe Michisagig Nation, now known as the Mississaugas of the Credit. Michisagig Nation is in the past and the present continues to host both indigenous and non-indigenous people. The HTSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impacts of colonialisms. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties and responsibilities, and indigenous rights while actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land. Upon reflection, I have come to realize that our land acknowledgement is more than words. It is a commitment to respect, learning and action. It reminds us of our responsibility to build meaningful relationships rooted in respect and reciprocity. We must continue to address the impact that colonialism has, which requires us to listen, learn and stand against hate in all its forms. We must continue to move forward to a future where all people are valued and the land is cared for together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Shuttleworth. And for the approval of the agenda, could I ask trustee Bryden to move that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for the items on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to 2.2 presentations and I would like to ask superintendent Nagoy to come and present 2.2.1, the 2025-2026 budget development planning presentation.
Alright, good evening trustees. And with me, I have our controller of financial services Jay Chan Tavong as well. And we wanted to take this opportunity to walk you through the preliminary budget development process, where we are today looking at the landscape of provincially and from a board perspective. As you know, we started the process back in the fall and in December, we had our first board report. So we're just building on that process tonight, so. Alright, so as I mentioned, we'll go through the provincial and the board perspective, just what to expect in terms of that internal and external landscape. The key budget components, we'll talk in terms of where we are this year, what we think, how those are, that's going to impact the 2025-2026 budget planning process. So the key budget component will include a review of our engrossment, how we get funded and how we spend our money. And of course, we will have a discussion with the trustees on the next steps in the planning process, things to consider, challenges that we expect and so forth. So the budget development process objectives haven't changed from year to year. Our budget processes aligned with the multi-year strategic plan and the board of trustees at the HTSB have approved a new multi-year strategic plan for 2024 to 2028 with six strategic commitments, which we take into with six strategic commitments, which we take into account. So the budget planning process allocates resources, limited resources, that support the six strategic commitments. And it follows through, in terms of our decision, informed decision-making process, when we are looking at monitoring the multi-year strategic plan for the year, developing a revised budget, and trying to stay within the allocated approved amounts by the board. At the same time, when we approved the budget in June, we also approved the annual capital plan and the special education plan. So we take that into account, as well as the corporate risk profile, which are our key strategic risks that may impact our ability to support the commitment, the strategic commitments identified in the multi-year plan. And of course, the budget process wouldn't be complex enough without looking at the regulatory compliance, the restrictions on how funds should be used, as well as other areas, such as the terms and conditions of employment and other contractual obligation that we have to meet. These are the key dates in the budget process, with those elements that result in a presentation or a report. As these days do come into effect, we would update our board website, the budget and financial information website, and we would provide these links so that the public can also access and follow along the process. To date, we've completed our stakeholder meetings with, we've met with the union, Halton Union Chairs. We've met with the elementary and secondary principal groups, the management group. We presented to the parent involvement committee. We do have a presentation for next week with the super councils as well, which was rescheduled from last week. So that, all those meetings are part of our feedback process and trying to provide sufficient information and receive meaningful input into our budget process. The budget survey was open until February the ninth, so it just closed. And we're in the process of retrieving that information, analyzing it. We'll provide the report with the feedback at the March fourth, March fourth board meeting. So through February and April, we have Committee of the Whole Budget Workshops. As we get more information, we seek feedback from Special Education Advisory Committee. And in May, we provide a draft budget for final approval at the Board of Trustees in June. So a lot of this, I've mentioned this information already. These, the website link, as well as the page for budget input, which has some background information that's still up there, are available on this slide. So just a little, we haven't really analyzed the data yet, but I just wanted to let you know that we received about twenty four hundred responses, whether they were budget survey responses or budget forms received from the sessions that we had with the various school staff. So a lot of them were group submissions, even though there are thirty, a lot of them were table discussions, and the responses were submitted as a group. So from a provincial perspective, is, a lot of this may or may not be still relevant after February twenty seventh. So I'll start with the fact that we are currently in election mode. So therefore, we are not sure exactly what that means in terms of timelines for when the provincial budget or the education sector funding will be released. So it depends on the election results. If the same government is elected, then within about two weeks, they're able to go back into caucus and make decisions, release the provincial budget. We would assume that the timelines wouldn't be impacted if the same government is elected. If there is a new government in place, there will be a four to six weeks transition period. So that might impact the decisions and the timeline of providing the education funding. The regular timelines for the provincial funding overall is usually by the end of March. And the education funding usually follows a couple of weeks later, so into mid-April. That's what we've seen over the last couple of weeks. So in terms of the current perspective from the government, the conservative government has been focusing on eliminating the provincial deficit and implementing austerity measures at the same time. So they're trying to contain costs in an economy where it's impacted by inflation, some growth in terms of population and so forth. Currently, according to the last economic outline, economic output report, the current year deficit was estimated at six point six billion, and the plan was to eliminate that by twenty six, twenty seven. So that's going to be a challenge, of course, when we have to look at the fact that the education sector is a second component of that provincial budget. And in, within two years, reducing the provincial budget by that much, unless there is additional revenue sources that will make up the difference, that would mean that funding might be impacted negatively for the sector. So there's a lot of unknowns at this point in time from a provincial perspective. From a funding formula, there are a couple of challenges which trustees are aware, and they do continue when we look at planning for next year. So for example, the funding formula has not always kept up with costs. And we have inflation pressures and market costs that have much exceeded the actual funding levels over the last number of years. In addition, supply costs for replacement of sick leave for those staff that are in front of students has increased by about sixty percent for our board, but has increased provincially as well. So it's a, it's a challenge for all the school boards. But the funding parameters have remained the same. So that gap is widening in terms of the cost to the school boards and the funding that is allocated to supply costs, supply staffing costs, I should say. Federally, there were enhancements to statutory benefits, in particular, the CPP contribution, that did not come with an offset in, an increase in the funding formula. So that is also a hit for our board, which impacts our ability and the limit, limited funding, the limited resources that we have to work with. The transportation funding formula has been changed. And unfortunately, that also resulted in a decrease to many school boards, including ours, in the province. Special education funding also has some parameters that are dated, and it does not keep up with the needs of, the increasing needs of students with exceptionalities. So from a board perspective, we are currently in an enrollment decline. And I'll go through the next couple of slides in terms of enrollment, just to show you the trends. So we've had many years of enrollment growth in the Halton region over the last couple of years. And the next few years, we're looking at a decline in both panels. A lot of that is as a result of families with school-aged children moving towards more rural areas, whether it's the ability to work from home, whether it's affordability. So the rural area, school boards have been seeing an increase in enrollment. We also have larger graduation cohorts that are replaced by smaller entry-level grades. The, the other areas that are a challenge, we don't currently expect any significant changes in the funding for next year, but we certainly don't, don't know that for sure. So some of the other challenges are what impacts our other revenue sources. So for example, when we do have a cash balance, we earn interest revenue, which is, you know, additional revenue that we can use to complement our resource allocation. As interest rates are continuing to decline, our interest revenue is also decreasing. We continue to see the impact of inflation and the market costs. We also have contractual obligations that are stipulating a certain percentage increase year over year that we have to pay, and that hasn't been matched with the funding in the past. Although we are declining overall, we still have areas of growth, and in particular, North Oakville and South Milton. So we are continuing to build schools in these areas for the families that move into these neighborhoods. And overall, as school board, we don't really have a lot of capacity. We do have temporary accommodations, portables in, in a lot of our schools. So we wouldn't be able to accommodate this growth in existing schools without really splitting families across multiple sites, long bus rides, and so forth. So next, I just wanted to talk to you about the budget components. And enrollment is our main driver of funding. And, and so as you can see, we are looking at over twelve hundred reduction in our average daily enrollments, or ADE. And that includes over five hundred reduction in the elementary panel, projected, I should say, and over seven hundred in the secondary panel. So that's our projection, a projection is based on the current year revised estimates, which is the top part of this, of this chart. So at this point in time, we don't have any of the count dates for enrollment for next year. So a projection means that we're estimating both of those count dates, which would be October thirty first and March thirty first, based on the current enrollment. So a lot could change, but what we've seen in the past two years have, have been quite a dip in enrollment. So we are being very sensitive to that information in how we are going to be planning our resources going forward. And we expect that the decline is going to, is going to continue. So at the elementary panel, as you can see, we've been going up and up and up. A little bit of a dip with COVID because we weren't sure what is happening, online learning, schools were closed, and so forth. Then it went a little bit up, and then we're going down for the next three years, before we expect to see an overall increase in the elementary panel. And for the secondary panel, the decline is a little bit more, as you can see, as larger cohorts are graduating and the grade eights coming into the secondary panel being quite smaller than the graduating class, grade twelve class. So revenue, there's two slides on revenue and expenses. So one is a visual, just showing the proportion of provincial grants and other revenue sources. But I will pause on the second outline of our revenues and how we get funded, which is a little bit more by category. And what I wanted to mention is that we receive most of the funding from the province and through the Ministry of Education, so about eighty-six percent. And it's through the core education funding, which is a new name for our grants. And then a little bit is through other provincial grants called responsive education programs, or REPS. And those are one-time, one-year grants for a very particular area of spending or priority, based on ministry priorities, I should say. Other areas of revenue that a school board has includes school-generated funds. Those are at school level with different separate accounts. And we consolidate them in our financial statement, so that's about two percent. And then we have investment income, as I mentioned, international student fees, rental income, and education development charges. So in terms of how we spend our funding, you will see, again, the biggest part of this pie chart is on instruction. And that's directly on instruction in the schools, in front of students, supporting student learning and well-being. And then indirectly, we spend on student transportation, maintaining our schools, so school operations and maintenance. And then other, which a lot of that is school-generated funds, expense, on the expense side. So really, when we're looking at our expenses, directly and indirectly, we spend about ninety-eight percent of our funding on instruction and on the students. So this just provides you the ministry category of expenses that we have to report on, and gives you a little bit more, more detail. So getting more to the more interactive part of this presentation, planning for next year. As trustees are aware, we do have a one-time deficit of one point eight million dollars, which was approved by the Board of Trustees, as well as the ministry, that requires to be eliminated next year. To get to this one-time deficit, we were required to make a lot of changes and reductions and find efficiencies last year to the tune of ten million dollars. So that's already, those reductions are already incorporated, and we do not have the ability to bring them back next year. So when we look at next year's planning, we're looking at eliminating the, the one-time items and trying to balance the budget, which means the revenues we received that year should equal the expenses in that year. If we are not able to do so, then again, we might look at requiring ministry approval, and it might be for other one-time items, if, if that's the case. But it cannot be structural. And in terms of structural deficit, that's something that would be an ongoing cost, something we have to pay, whether it's a contractual cost, whether it's permanent staff, whether it's, you know, keeping the lights on, sort of thing. So those things, we need to contain them within the, the actual annual amount of the revenue. So with that in mind, our sessions that we've done for budget stakeholders, we've done them early so that we can get input into what would be some areas that we can reallocate funds for, from, towards areas of priority. Are there any other redundancies and efficiencies we can do, areas that we can reduce? We are cautiously optimistic that we don't have to make the kind of reductions that we've done last year. We've done the, the legwork. And although it has an impact on the schools and the support around the students, the work was done. So we're, we're not looking at significant reductions unless the funding changes significantly. But we are looking at containing costs and finding efficiencies. So I wanted to pause here for a discussion with the trustees in terms of the areas of challenges, priorities, things that we should consider. This is all part of providing that feedback back to us. And Jay will take some notes, will incorporate it in with other, other feedbacks. So I wanted to open it up to, to the committee.
Does anyone have any questions about anything that was already presented before we go in? Mark, I'll go ahead.
Thanks. Okay, so I've got a couple of questions, some are just out of interest and some are other ones. So you, the one thing that you spoke about was the enrollment, and how we're really focusing on the enrollment and declining enrollment, and what the cause of declining enrollment has been seen is people moving to more rural areas. So my question with that is, is are, are schools that are in those more rural areas, are they increasing in students?
So students who are, or families who are moving to rural areas are moving four hours away. So they're not moving within Halton rural areas, they're moving quite out of our boundaries. And yes, those school boards have been increasing in enrollment year after year.
So are, so I'm thinking about places like Georgetown or Acton, which are more rural-ish. So are they seeing increased enrollment? Because they are kind of more rural, properties are less expensive, cost of living, all that piece. I'm just wondering, you spoke to North Oakville and South Milton as expanding areas. I don't, I don't think they're, they're rural. So I'm just trying to figure out, if we're focusing on enrollment decreasing because we see students moving to more rural areas, however, North Oakville and South Milton are expanding areas which aren't rural, were rural, I'm struggling with that conflict, because that, to me, isn't completely sensible. So I'm just trying to figure out if there are anything else that we can be doing to look at why our enrollment might be decreasing when, in certain areas that are not rural, it isn't.
So if I can.
I can speak to that if you'd like. Those facts, to me, are not contradictory. We have a whole bunch of development in specific communities in Halton, and that development brings in more families, and intends to be on the more affordable. and tends to be on the more affordable side. Where in my community in Burlington, things have been getting less and less affordable. And the demographic composition is changing as such. And so you do have this tension of parts of the community, parts of the suburban community growing and parts of the suburban community shrinking when it comes to the number of kids who are in our schools. And that's and part of that shrinking is families moving to other parts of the province. The, Mike Moffett, one of the analysts who's looked at housing across the province, pointed out that from Toronto, and we're not that dissimilar, the population age group that was the most likely to leave was zero and one-year-olds. So all those young, young kids and young, young families are moving out of the city and more and more out of the suburbs as well. And that's driving this trend, along with province-wide population trends of which age groups are largest.
Thank you. Can I call, I can tell you, Robbie, because we're in the whole, thanks for that. But I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out if there are things that we can do. Like again, so when a new school opens, lots of kids come, regardless of what board you're in, you always want to go to the new school. So I'm just trying to think about what types of opportunities we are exploring to try to bring in more students, if you see what I mean.
So certainly, we do have a committee that is looking at student retention and attraction and programming and being the HDSV, being the school board of choice. So maybe I'll pass it on to associate director.
Yes, thank you. So we have a committee representative of a number of superintendents, elementary school principals, secondary school principals, planning, communications. So a wide variety of staff. And we are on to our third meeting. And so we're looking at how can we enhance program? We're looking at all kinds of things. You know, marketing, all of those pieces. So we can bring a more fulsome, you know, report to the board in terms of what that plan looks like for the rest of this year and all of next year. Once the committee work is done, we should be done by the end of March.
Thank you. I do have another question, but I'll wait for everybody else.
Thank you.
Jean?
Yes, thank you very much. I had wanted to jump in when some of the answers were being given about the rural areas and growth and so on and so forth. Many of you have heard over the years us talk about Vision Georgetown, which when I started as a trustee 11 years ago, it was the big thing up here. And once that opened up, another 22,000 people would be coming into Halton Hills, into Georgetown specifically. Still, to this day, they haven't put a shovel in the ground. It's just been mired in one issue after another. But there is, you know, a future in the offing that once that happens, things will, once they start to develop, it will really come together. But to Margot's concerns and to her thoughts, it's not happening up here in the hills right now. And Acton hasn't really seen a very big development, a small development, maybe of about 20 houses on the main drag. But there just hasn't been the building and growth up here. And I know that the committee under Tina Somini, that's looking into retention, a great focus will be given, of course, on to what we can do for areas like Acton High School, which has, you know, a very small student population. And we're challenged to provide very diverse programming with such a small population within the school. You recall that we did a seven-to-12 school, which was a great move. A couple of years ago, we moved Acton into a seven-to-12 school to try and retain those seven and eights into nine. But we're still, I think, studying whether that has had the impact that we thought it may. But anyway, I just wanted to add that from up here in the hills on a wintery, glowy night.
Joanna?
Yeah, thank you. In response to Margot's question, I think certainly daycare spots and before and after-school programs make schools very attractive to families and would help with recruitment and retention of students. And particularly in schools that are being, you know, new, in new subdivisions with young families coming. So I don't know what the status of that is. Does every elementary school in our region have daycare or before and after-school program? But I would hope that that's something that this committee that Roxanna and Tina spoke to would be considering. And I know that that requires funding and approvals and all that kind of stuff, but I think that is critical.
And Roxanna? So not every school has a childcare center attached. Most of the new ones do. When we submit a business case for a new school, we do ask for childcare spaces. Our schools do, the elementary schools, I should say, do have before and after care. A number of them are with various providers. And we are aware that there were some struggles in maintaining service. So we also have six sites that we've took on. And we're providing that care. So just to ensure that parents do have the before and after care that they require. And as we open new schools, we're looking at adding those schools as well.
Thank you. And I also am aware that Glen Williams, which is a very tiny school, just down the road from there, the Catholic Board got permission to build a brand-new elementary school. So that's surely going to draw more students away from the public elementary panel for those that are eligible to go to the shiny, brand-new school. And I don't know how they justify that, given the population there. It's, I, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But there we go. That's, you know, another reason for one school system, in my opinion. You said you had another question? Okay, go ahead, Tanya.
Yeah, I have a question. It's more of a, I'm trying to wrap my head around a term that was used. And I had asked about this in my Q and A beforehand. On slide five, where it refers to super council, and you mentioned it tonight that there's going to be a meeting with the super council. I'm not clear on who super council is.
So this is my first meeting to the super councils. I believe they're the school council chairs or representatives. However, the chair is the liaison with that committee, so I may pass it back.
Most trustees run a super council. They meet with the schools a couple of times a year. I know that Jean does, and I believe Donna does. And I know that other trustees do as well. And I invited Roxanna to come and talk to my super council. But we had a snowstorm, so we had to postpone it by a couple of weeks, unfortunately.
So that was, that was I've heard of the term super council when trustees organize these side meetings. I thought it was an official thing where you were going to go out to this super council. So, okay, thank you.
Do you still have a question? Go ahead, Margot.
I have two. One is going to be the question that I know Roxanna is probably waiting for because I always ask it. But my other question was, so one of the things that it said in there was special education funding model has not kept up with the increase in students with exceptionalities. Now, I know when we look at the budget, we always look at pockets of money. Right? So with that, how do we determine the pocket that goes to special education? So if we know that our model has not kept up with the increase in student exceptionalities, are we maybe looking at ensuring that that pocket recognizes that over the last, at least, I know at least past two, three years, special education funding has never really been enough?
So special education funding is one of those enveloped areas. So it has to be spent on eligible expenses for programs and services for special education. We've always, as a school board, recognized that they are our most vulnerable students, and we have prioritized the supports. So we've always overspent in this area on purpose. And we've just seen a lot of increase in demand. So there's a lot more assessments, there's a lot more students with special needs that have entered our system in the last number of years. So in trying to provide everybody with the support that they need, and a lot of it is very individualized, we would put in place the various layers of support, whether it's professionals and paraprofessionals, where is educational assistance, whether it's an integrated model or a self-contained class. And we have different self-contained classes which have they're based on exceptionalities and a lower, obviously, class size with the assistance in the class. So it depends on what the student needs. They are identified by the special education program staff. So those that are qualified to make recommendations. And then the plan comes forward, goes to the CAC committee. It's also integrated and aligned with the board budget.
And I just wanted to make one small comment. We should never say that we overspend on anything. We are underfunded. We spend what we need to spend. And we would spend more if we had more to spend on these students. We're not overspending, we're not, we're not even approaching overspending when it comes to special education, I don't think. Thanks. I don't see any other woman more. Okay, go ahead, Margot.
No, Carol's there first.
Go ahead, Carol.
Sorry, I was just trying to get in before you moved on. I didn't want to jump in front of Margot. So my question is about the supply costs. There was, I believe I might have the number wrong, but I think it was 60% increase in supply costs at our board. Correct me if I'm getting that incorrect. And I'm just wondering if there's a study that's been done or is there one underway to identify the drivers for that increase and a plan developed to address the causes?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Baxter. So yes, if we look at from a cost perspective, from 2018 to current, we are looking at about 60% increase in those costs. So a lot of it is increase in utilization. And there is a provincial study that is done annually. Most school boards participate. I think there's only a couple who do not out of the 72. So we can see how our school board compares to the provincial average by employee group, for example. And, you know, it also allows us to see where the, some of the challenges were in the prior year and so forth. So when we look at that increase in costs, whether it's an increase in utilization, whether the actual average salary over time has increased, so that also increases costs. The funding hasn't kept up. The funding is still based on the same parameters. So that for us, for example, means about $10 million that are under, were underfunded. So there are, we do have an attendance support program. Not a lot of school boards have necessarily the same robust one. So we do have an assistant program to support employees coming back to work. Not sure I can share a lot about the reasons, you know, whether it was pandemic, whether the immune systems have, you know, lowered and we see a lot more illnesses. All of those drivers that impact everyone, certainly impact our staff, except that we have to replace staff that are in front of students. So there's a lot, there's, it could be mental health. So a lot of different reasons. I'm not sure I have a fulsome answer in terms of the areas. The provincial study I'm talking about does not look at those particular drivers.
Sorry, if I may just add as well, Trustee Baxter, certainly, most school boards are seeing the same trend that we are. And it, you know, certainly, some of the suggestions are around collective agreements, different allocations of sick leave and long-term, you know, offerings for staff to be, to be away. That there has been a marked difference between previous sick leave allotments and the current model, which we all live with right now. I can tell you that most directors of education are seeing the exact same thing that we're seeing. And perhaps it's, perhaps it's rooted in some of the language and some of the benefits that staff are afforded. And they're certainly taking advantage of the offerings.
Thank you, Director Ennis. I think we have second time speaker, and then I'll go back to Margot. So Jean?
Yes, thank you very much. And just wanted to focus on slide eight. And slide eight has a bullet on the second, on the right-hand side about the transportation funding. I just wanted to explore that a bit because I have this theory about the funding for Halton. This says here that the new funding allocation resulted in a reduction in funding to most school boards. Just, could you clarify for me, was our board one of the boards that had a reduction in funding?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we did lose a couple million dollars, unfortunately, in this reallocation. It is also based on efficiencies. So we have to provide a simulation to the ministry. And, you know, efficient school boards like ourselves who have free runs on the same bus in the morning and free in the afternoon, only need one bus. Other school boards may need two or three buses for the same amount of runs. So all of that is put in a simulation, and then the funding is sort of distributed. That's one part of the allocation. There's other parameters, of course, I'm simplifying. But we did, as a result, lose funding. One of the things that happened with the new transportation funding, they've incorporated some new elements such as retention reward program for drivers that was outside of that funding. It was done directly from the ministry to the bus operators. So once they put in those new allocations in, it seemed that there's more money in the funding allocation overall. But we never had to flow that money through. So really, if you, if you started to take those apart and compare the formula, we did sort of show the ministry that there's less funding overall. And luckily, there was a provincial and will hopefully continue to have those provincial discussions. So there's been some tweaks to the formula and they're, they were starting to listen. Whether or not we'll recover all the funding, I'm not sure. But we are actively trying to inform their decision-making when they change funding formulas.
So my theory, and I'm just going to state this, is that it seems like the better we are at efficiencies and cuts and ensuring very good practice, the more we get pounded by getting less money. And I think about, beyond transportation, I think about the way in which our students perform provincially. We are known as a board that is always ahead of the province and does exceptionally well in terms of whether we're talking about the different tests, the literacy tests, or whether we're talking about graduation rates and so on and so forth. Once again, it, that theory that, look at Halton, they can do much more with much less, seems to compound on us. And we sort of live that reality because it seems like we get less this, and despite the fact that we do so much more with it. And we definitely, I think, would be a good business case for many other boards to follow our lead. But that's just me speaking in my observations over all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean, and back to Margot.
Yes, and so what Jean actually said leads into my question or comment, which I think Roxanna and I ask you every year when we get to budget. So one of the things that you said is that we cannot have a structural deficit. However, in the last few, well, last year, we had to have a compliant budget, compliant deficit, but still a deficit. And as Jean said, what we are, every year, we are being creative and your team is doing this amazing job to find efficiencies and move things around. But every year, it gets worse and worse and worse. And by us as trustees saying, you're doing a great job, this is wonderful, we're going to pass this budget. My warrior, my fear is wonderful. We're going to pass this budget. My warrior, my fear is, is that all we are doing is encouraging the government to continue to cut funding, because we're able to do it without that. So I'm just wondering, when we get to the budget, and I know it's your job to be creative and find solutions. But if we are getting to the point where those solutions are hurting the needs of the students, the families in our schools, when do we say, or when do you say, we can't do this?
I think that's a very fair question. And certainly, in the education sector, we see the long-term implications of the reductions that we have to make. As a treasurer, I cannot recommend that the trustees run a structural deficit. It's not fiscally responsible. You know, if we have something one year, and because we have, we've had accumulated surplus, that was one thing. But having a structural deficit isn't the right way to go. Now, I'll say two things. One, we received an approval letter from the ministry and said, yes, we acknowledge you want to use your one-time funding from reserves for these, so you don't make permanent reductions. It makes sense. Another school board, I'm not going to mention, received a letter to say, no, we don't approve it, because they were in a situation where they said, we don't want to reduce programs. We're going to keep them. They're in the interest of students. And the letter was, okay, no problem. We're going to come in and let you know where we're going to find savings. So I would really recommend the trustees that we continue to be vocal, lobby, make them understand so that the decision-making process is informed, and provide adequate funding. They understand where the gaps are. They understand the implications, short term or long term, to the students. But we are fiscally responsible in doing so.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that is all the questions. Oh, somebody, Carol. Go ahead.
Sorry. Thanks for letting me jump back in. When Jean was speaking, I remembered a question I think I've asked in the past and just haven't followed up on. I was wondering, is there any data, or does the board collect any data from students and/or parents around the prevalence of using outside resources to support students, like tutoring or outside testing and that kind of thing? Sort of to Jean's point, our board certainly does have a reputation for great results and high achievement from students in standardized testing. But we also hear in some neighborhoods that there are families, if they can afford it, that are seeking resources outside of school. And I'm just wondering, do we have any idea of the prevalence of that? And I'm kind of approaching it from an equity perspective. We don't, I don't believe we have data that I've seen from our census around socioeconomic markers for families. But certainly, one of the biggest roles of public education is to ensure that all students in Ontario have the resources to education to achieve their goals, whatever they may be. And if we're seeing uneven resources available to students, and therefore uneven outcomes, then I think this is a really important question that we should be asking. So again, I was just wondering if the board has any data on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Baxter. Certainly, we have not collected that kind of information, but I will be speaking with our researcher, Dr. Michelle Lea, around the upcoming surveys that we will be doing, to see if we can capture some of that information.
If I may just ask, we do have resources that we allocate to students that have certain needs, that have been identified, learning gaps and so forth. So there are students who are, who require additional support, receive additional resources and support as well. So we do allocate them based on an equity basis, based on data. But that is all our resources. So what families can or cannot afford, that's not really part of that resource allocation model.
Okay. And Jean? Was it Joanna?
My question has been answered, thank you.
Okay, Joanna?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say, I really appreciate the question Carol posed, and I do think we need to explore this. Given the chronic underfunding that our school board, and possibly all of, all of the Ontario school boards have suffered through the, you know, the actions of the government, underfunding public education and essentially eroding public education, it's no longer that we're not doing our job. It's never been about that, right? Because we've been doing our job and doing our job very well with limited resources. This data does not show, does not say anything negative about the school board. What it does do is point to the ineffectiveness of the government in being able to recognize what it costs to deliver quality education. And I'm particularly getting infuriated when I read the comments around special education funding model, not keeping pace with the increase in students with exceptionalities. We hear that year after year. It is, it boils my blood that this is, this is the scenario we're facing. And I know that our staff are doing the best they can. They're allocating resources the best that they can. And then our teachers need to deal with that reality. But we're hearing stories, right, that teachers are struggling, students are struggling. And we need to keep the government accountable. And we need to be able to collect the data that will point to where the insufficient funding is, what it would cost, what is needed. I think a comprehensive needs assessment really is required, because we, this is not getting better. We're going, we're heading into tougher times. And hearing that the government wants to take some drastic actions when they've been underfunding us and other school boards for years and years, that is really, really severely upsetting me now. And I just wanted to make that comment, because I think we need to now be looking at, we have to share the data that supports what we're saying, what our needs are, and hence the Trustees Funding Advocacy Committee. And I know that we're eager to share that information with our stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. So one more ask, if there are any more questions at this point. Okay, please go ahead, Roxanne.
Well, that was all we had for this evening. Thank you for the conversation. We'll continue with our discussions, and we'll be back in April to have a more fulsome discussion.
Thank you. And thank you to Jay as well, for all your hard work on this to date. I know that it is a year in the planning and then in the unfolding. So thank you very much for all your hard work on this. Oh, yes, go ahead, Robbie.
Sorry, I was a little unclear on how the conversation was unfolding there. I heard the framing of that section being questions on what had been presented thus far. And my understanding was that there was a second part where we were going to have a conversation about priorities. Did I misunderstand what was intended there?
No, I think it was all in one, really. Some of the concerns and challenges were reflected. But certainly, if there's any other comments in terms of what you see, priorities or challenges you want to voice, this would be the right time to do so.
Go ahead, Robbie.
Thank you. For me, the, there are a couple of items that I know the board has been looking at through the work that our auditors do in assessing the risks facing the organization. And some of those involve, ones that we've identified around this table, around student success post-pandemic, addressing the learning loss that occurred through that gap, and the supports in place for ensuring that students are back on track, and those that have fallen behind are being helped to catch up. And the very next item we're going to deal with on this agenda is about the state of good repair of our schools, and looking at the question of, you know, we spend more on special education than we are enveloped for it. We spend more on a couple of these instructional elements deliberately to try and provide those supports that we was just talking about. But that means we spend less on facilities maintenance. And with a growing backlog, is that still the appropriate trade-off to make? I guess that's the question. So, one, I think post-pandemic sports are a major priority. And two, there's a question about whether this is the right trade-off.
That is a loaded question, and you're absolutely right. There, you know, it's a trade-off, absolutely. It just increases the backlog. It's a long-term, it's a short-term solution to a long-term problem. So every year, we do try to be as creative as possible to use all the funding sources that we can capitalize as much as we can, so that we can contain, I guess, that impact on facility repair and maintenance. But at the end of the day, there are areas in the budget that we spend less. We spend less on facilities. We spend less on other resources that are non-staffing, administration, things like that. We also compensate with additional revenue. So we have interest revenue, international students, rental. So all of that is making up for some of the areas that were underfunded for as well. So it is a balance every year that we look at. But overall, yes, there is a risk of continuing to underfund repairs and maintenance.
And I'll add one more, following up on Joanna's point about daycares. I know that's not just the presence of a before and after-school program, it's the ability to access it. And I hear stories in our schools about parents who find out two weeks beforehand that they have a spot or don't have a spot, about wait lists of 40 students for a before and after-school program, and of parents choosing to go to a different school board because they can't get a before and after-school spot. So have we looked at the business case for, you know, knowing that the effect on enrollment, and more broadly, the business case for considering how we proceed with ensuring that there are sufficient staffing for those programs, whether they're operated by us or a third party, in how that moves forward?
So as I mentioned, we have taken over the sites that were most challenging for the other operators. We do not have a say, or, you know, much to do in terms of how they operate, their staffing. But if they do struggle, then we do have a before and after-care program that is now up and running, and we would be able to take over other sites if necessary. But they are under contract, so we are limited in terms of how much help we can provide. And if we do take it over, then it's with our staff. So we have to sort of take over the whole site, as opposed to cover a day here and there. But we do have a strategy in place. And I think, overall, there's been an improvement in the operator's ability to retain staff in that particular field as well.
And if, I mean, Superintendent Flahout, would you be able to just comment on the, our offering of childcare and how that is, how that is going?
Absolutely. And so currently, our before and after-school programming, we have six sites that are operating, and we're working very closely with the region. We currently have made some applications to increase some of the enrollment in some of those locations. As you may be aware, there needs to be licensing in place, and there needs to be funding to support those, so that families can have discounts for the kindergarten programming. And so we're in a good financial position at this point. Last year, we were in quite a deficit in terms of the monies collected, and the number of families in the programming, and the supports that were available. And so we've come to a place where we've increased some of the enrollment in those locations. And we're able to, at this point in time, we're breaking even and looking to grow that program in order to, you know, hopefully start creating a bit of a profit in those areas. Currently, I don't have a full prepared report for you, but I'm happy to if there needs to be, you know, more details in terms of the numbers and how we can move forward with some of that programming. But things are going quite well, and the relationship with the region is becoming quite positive. As a matter of fact, our new Oakville school, we've, we've applied to get spaces there as well, because there was no new funding from the ministry for sealwalk spaces, which is the subsidized spaces. But the region was able to accommodate, hopefully, to allow us to put it on application. So we're still waiting to hear back on that as well. But the six sites are going really well, and the supports that we have, we've heard great comments from families around that as well.
Okay, so then we're gonna need to close down really soon. So Joanna, this is going to be the last question.
Thank you. Yeah, just to quickly pick up on Robbie's point, exactly. It's not that we have daycare or a before-after-school program. It's, does it meet the needs, right? It's a demand and supply kind of scenario. And my dream would be that each of our schools has a daycare and a before and after-school program, and that each program understands the needs of that school's community, and is able to accommodate all the students that require it. That is my dream. And I'm happy to hear that there is progress being made and relationships being built with the region, and, you know, funding sources, whatever it might be. But I really, I would love that to be something that we aim for, because it's good for our students, it's good for our families, and it's good for the society. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that, Trustee Aller. And I believe that wraps up the conversation. Thank you very much. And now we would like to move on to the consent agenda. Trustee Rocha, would you move for acceptance of the consent agenda?
I so hope.
Are there any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Seeing none, it is approved by unanimous consent. Now we move on to physical infrastructure, state of repair update. And Superintendent Gudette, your turn on the hot seat.
Thank you, and good evening. I was pleased to prepare this report. I do recall, back a number of months ago, almost a year ago, Trustee Bryden asked, you know, can we provide some sort of State of the Union address around facilities? And at the time, we were compiling our FCI data, our KPI data, and incorporating that into our long-term accommodation plan. And so trying to figure, yeah, what can this look like? And so when the formal request came forward, seeking, you know, how do we stand up against the Financial Accountability Office of Ontario, that's what I dove into. This report kind of follows the same format as that report. And I tried to break down with the data that was accessible to me, what I could glean for Halton compared to the province. And while I'll say, you know, the funding situation that that report provides looks a little gloomy, on the optimistic side. I think the Halton District School Board is doing rather well. It paints a pretty positive picture in terms of our schools being in good repair. And despite perhaps not the same level of funding, we seem to achieve good results. And so, you know, that's my starting point. And I will say, some of the data in this is not what we typically relate to, and I tried to highlight that. School boards are used to using facility condition index data, not state of good repair. And when I looked through their technical papers, I couldn't find what that calculation actually was. It seems to paint a positive picture again for Halton, as does our FCI picture. It's not negative when I look at it. We have an average FCI of about 25%, which It's it's not negative when I when I look at it, we have an average FCI of about twenty five percent, which which is is good. I tried to articulate that, you know, that the worst facility in our portfolio is this building that you're in here tonight. And and it does require substantial renewal or or replacement. And so that's that's good from my perspective that our schools are better than this facility. Because many of us work here and and still, I think, do a great job. So I I also did try to highlight, just from an inventory perspective, some of the complexities around our job. Despite the fact that we're growing, we've got an aged inventory of seven thousand pieces of mechanical equipment, depending on how you count it. So if you think about your home and you've got one furnace and it breaks down on a cold windy night like tonight, we've got seven thousand of those. And then we've added eleven percent over the last four years. So we've added a substantial amount of equipment to our inventory. We haven't added eleven percent of staff from a from a maintenance perspective. We do contract out a lot of our work and it's it's the same vendor pool. There are trade shortages, there are cost escalation pressures that we're facing still post pandemic. And so so those realities hit us a little bit harder when we're dealing with our operating budget. And in some cases, that does have a spillover effect into our capital. As Superintendent Nagoy alluded to, you know, we're trying to be very strategic with the resources that were provided. This board, I think, has seen us in the past come forward with one hundred and forty projects to approve from a capital perspective. We're trying to be a lot more strategic around how we package our projects and resource and get at some of the backlog of needs. While we're at a school and package projects to to create a greater economy of scale and more efficiencies. And with that, hopefully make us, you know, leaner and stronger as well. Not only from our own staff resources, but from the vendors that we rely on. Sometimes we spread them too thin across the many sites that we have. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. But like I said, this this data is based on the FAO report and what I could extract. Some of the data was not available to me, like state of good repair, so I I don't know in some cases. When they start to do a school by school comparison or or quantify a number of schools, I didn't have access to that data.
Thank you for your report, Superintendent Gaddat. Are there any questions? Robbie?
Yes, I'll I'll. Echo that the the state of good repair in the the FAO report looked very, very good for Holden. Surprising to me, but given given that our schools are, as you point out, on average age with the province. And and that we had. As I said in the previous debate, that we've we've underspent our facilities envelope, the team has done a remarkable job on that front. I. Sorry, in the report, you you state. In regards to the FAO report, that it identifies the HTSB has a backlog maintenance in the range of fifty million dollars. And that is equivalent with what we see. But that our funding is not enough to keep up with the growing backlog. Could you tell us a little bit about what that looks like, not just at this moment in time, but what we've seen over the last few years in terms of trend? Of what what that growing backlog looks like and and what it might look like in five years if we continue on this path?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So I will say, you know, if we did have a fifty million dollar backlog, to remove that backlog, we would need fifty million dollars of funding. We would need to spend it immediately to remove it, which is does not work. We we saw that issue with COVID resilient infrastructure stream funding where we we had a year to to spend the money. When I'll say, greater minds prevailed to say, yeah, you you need a couple of years to spend this money. So that that funding stream was expanded over a couple of years as opposed to one very intense year. So we we would need a number of years to remove the backlog and establish what that new need is. Whether that's the existing thirty million dollars worth of funding that we receive annually to to get at that backlog, whether that would be adequate. I think we'd need to figure out one of the challenges post pandemic. And we certainly see it with our new school build costs, as they have almost doubled. And so we're starting to see additional funding through the ministry to support new construction costs. I can't say the same for renewal and school condition improvement funds. Those those have been relatively stable, they adjust based on our enrollment and and some age. But has tended to be thirty million dollars for the last period of time. So, you know, I'm not an, I I don't typically deal in backlog. We've we've reported it through our facility condition index analysis that's conducted. And that's usually not a tool that we monitor from a board specific perspective. We're more focused on what are the high and urgent needs that are identified so we can start to prioritize our projects. But certainly it is something that the FAO starts to tackle in terms of what the funding requirements would need to be. And and some significant investments would need to be made to wipe out the backlog. So from my perspective, yeah, if if we don't, we're gonna continue to see it grow unless the funding starts to overcome that backlog growth.
I have a question regarding AODA compliance. We were supposed to be compliant this year, twenty twenty five, and I know that they have extended that time for us to be compliant. But we've never ever received financing specifically geared to making our buildings AODA compliant. In the fifty million dollar backlog, does that include AODA compliance? Or is that something that is over and above the fifty million dollar backlog?
Thanks for the question, but I I it's not my data. I would expect, being that it's directionally correct with the data that we have, it does not include accessibility backlog. Because that has never been properly funded, to your point. And only recently has become an area of interest in the audits that are conducted. So they're they're starting to identify the 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 lack of accessibility requirements within our facilities. But historically, if we had a two story building without an elevator, the elevator was not there to assess and and say that there was a backlog. It needed any maintenance, so it's not a maintenance item.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Are there any other questions for Superintendent Gaddat? Jean?
Yes, thank you very much. I first of all, this was a very well done report. There's so much information here and it gives us a lot of cause to pause and and ponder and think about. Our exact state here in in Halton. One of the things that I read in through the report was that, and I think about it as a homeowner. And that is taking a proactive approach to maintenance and and systems within a home. And and how that in fact saves money in the long run as opposed to being reactive in cases. And I and I gather through your report, and perhaps you'd like to comment on it more, is that the limited funds that we have does not permit that. And and this despite the fact that I think there was something like the in the order of seven thousand mechanical systems that we're trying to keep. Running, operating in in good maintenance and what have you. But I wonder if you could comment more on, are we doing the proper maintenance? Or are we just waiting till a boiler stops or a furnace doesn't work anymore?
Yeah, thanks for that. I I do think, you know, we we try to do the proper maintenance, absolutely. Sometimes things do break despite our best intentions. To your point, as a homeowner, you know, I think of roofing is a great example where once your roof fails. Then you've got some other problems to deal with, with drywall repairs and and ceiling repairs. And so you never wanted to get to that point, you want to be proactive, start to identify when the age has deteriorated to the point where it, you know. Will start to create other problems for you and that's that's your ideal is to get in there before the life cycle has failed. So, you know, we we part of the ministry's approach to doing these audits is to help us identify those. So there is a proactive approach from the ministry as well, as well as our staff. And so we leverage that information with, you know, what we know from our on the ground experience. So, you know, if you have replaced a roof, sometimes you you get a great installation. And sometimes you you don't get the best contractor and there might be some gaps and and they tend to show up earlier. Than than you would have hoped or planned. And and so that's where, yeah, we we want to be on top of our maintenance protocols. Using our vendors and our contractors to help us identify and be proactive to apply relatively easy fixes through our operational budgets. So that we don't have to replace something prematurely with a large capital expense in advance of the end of its life cycle. So I do think we we try, but certainly, you know, there there's been a lot of growth and expansion. And, you know, new new features added to our school as well. I think of air conditioning is a great example where obviously it's great for student learning and occupant comfort. But that that comes with a burden of maintenance as well. So there there's new factors as well as the just the traditional what what we had when we opened up a building, for example. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. I I in particular thought of all of the the HEPA filters and and other equipment that we put into schools during COVID. And wondered as we cycle into three, four years down the road now, is the maintenance being able to be. Applied there in all cases?
So I'll say certainly our MIR thirteen filters in our HVAC systems, I don't think they're going away. It has become the norm. I think if we wanted to switch back to a lower quality filter, that would likely cost us more because I don't think they're producing them like they used to. And then similarly, you know, we're trying to get at the annual HEPA filter replacement in our in our units. But I also recognize that there has not been the need or the demand for them. So I I do worry that many times these have been unplugged or are not being used. And then we're still trying to keep up with preventative maintenance. So there's an opportunity there at some point when, you know, the time is right, we can evaluate whether there might be an opportunity to remove those from our system.
Are there any other questions for Ian? Seeing none, thank you very much, this was a great report. And now we're back to Superintendent Nagoy for item four point two. Superintendent Nagoy is here this evening to talk to us about the prior term reserve because she has more up to date information and understanding of how it works.
So the trustee prior term reserve essentially is a rolling balance of each term's trustee budgets. It currently sits at about one hundred and twenty two thousand. It's probably a bit less because there were a couple of things that were allocated towards that. So the in year amounts that would go towards the public education symposium or the the labor relation symposium, things like that. Would come out of that for the trustees attending. Additional things that we typically put through this. So the prior, the prior term reserve is the amount of money that is allocated towards professional development. That either benefits all trustees in in accordance with the governance procedure. It benefits all trustees, so like a governance training, for example. Or the the trustee is a representative of the board on a provincial level committee or association. So some of those roles where the representative has to do certain meetings, travel or attend conferences. On behalf of being representative on that committee would also come through through here. Those are the typical things that we see. It did increase with COVID when, of course, there was no ability to do professional development or travel. But we do see that coming back down. So I'm not sure if there is any particular questions you want to me to to answer. We do require a board motion to determine if if there's additional. Trainings or PD opportunities that should be allocated here in addition to what is in the governance procedure right now.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Roxanna? Go ahead, Tanya.
Sorry, am I unclear? Because on the agenda, the discussion item was for trustees, but Roxanna presented. So is there a discussion that the trustees need to have?
This is an opportunity for further understanding of how the account works. Because some of the trustees around the table aren't very familiar with the prior term reserve account. And there has been some talk at last committee of the whole meeting, which a couple of you were not at. There was some discussion there about the prior term reserve. And I know that you had raised questions about the prior term reserve. So we wanted to make sure at this meeting, it's called a preliminary discussion because it was to make sure everyone's on the same page. About how the prior term reserve works. And then at a future meeting, we'll talk about perhaps ways that we would like to spend that money. But we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page first because some trustees didn't really understand. What it was made up of and what its purpose was and where it resides in the trustee expenses governance. Procedure, so putting all of those pieces of the puzzle together so that everyone is coming to the discussion on the same page. Robbie?
There, so the amounts that are basically the unspent amounts at the end of term get rolled over into the into the next term. One of those challenging things is that we each have a certain amount of budget that is allocated to us and some of it will not be spent. Do we have, without being able to know precisely, do we have trends to compare against? To say, okay, our spending so far this term is at fifty percent of amount. And in previous terms, it's been at forty percent or anything like that. Is that, does that exist?
That absolutely exists, I don't have it in in front of me for right now, but absolutely, if you're interested to see. Looking at last term with COVID won't be a good comparison, but if you wanted to see the trustee term before, so the twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen. And what the first two years of that looked like compared to this, we can certainly provide that. I'm assuming you want it on aggregate, obviously, because it's a different board of trustees. And the spending also changes from year to year depending on priorities and whatever is available in terms of opportunities to to attend. We do, so we do sort of monitor, however, if a trustee for during the four years, the individual trustee budget rolls for that individual trustee as well. So if one trustee hasn't spent a couple of thousand dollars and next year they have that additional money. If they wanna, maybe they're saving for something, a larger conference that's more expensive or something like that. So it's going to roll for the four years and then the balance of the term, then it gets rolled into the prior year reserve account.
Yes, aggregate would absolutely be the right idea for that purpose. The the intent being to, if if the question came forward of should we use this money in some way, shape or form? We want to ensure that there is enough left for the next term to to fulfill their their PD requirements. But if there's more than that, then maybe we should ask the question of whether reallocation of some portion is on the table.
I also wanted to add that not every trustee submits service expenses on a regular basis. Some trustees, I've, and please don't ever do this, but some trustees in the past have waited until the fourth year to expense everything. And that is an awful lot of work for our our. Staff to administer and it's a lot of work for that trustee who has waited all those years to accumulate everything, put it all together and submit it. So if if anyone on this call has not submitted any expenses so far, please start now. Don't wait until next year because it's an awful lot of work if you get that far behind. Are there?
Yeah, so I would, I would agree with Robbie. I think over the years, I've seen the prior term reserve account balance increase. And I suspect it's going to keep increasing because our budgets increased by about $2,000 a year. So personally, I don't think there should be this much money in a prior term reserve. It could be slashed in half, especially when we listen to a presentation on deficits and cutting costs and whatnot. There's money just sitting there and it's been sitting there for years, tens of thousands of dollars. So I think it does warrant us taking a much closer look at what the trends are and releasing some of those funds to where they could be better spent.
I guess certainly start looking at the last few terms, just to provide some trends for trustees.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Roxanna? Anyone online that had some questions regarding the prior term reserve? Oh, what does that say? Oh, okay, okay. That's fine. Thank you very much for that update or information session for us there, Roxanna. And I know we'll be calling you back in a few minutes. We are now up to our committees and I would like to ask for a brief update from each of the standing committees. Board self-assessment, Joanna?
All right, thank you. As you recall, the Board Self-Assessment Committee facilitated professional development session related to some of the findings from our survey that we conducted last year. Thanks to all the trustees who participated. The committee has planned a couple more such PD sessions to work through the remainder of the survey findings, and we look forward to facilitating these sessions in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Joanna?
Yeah, thank you. So question of clarification, you mentioned that the Board Self-Assessment Committee facilitated PD sessions. Can you remind me which PD sessions those were?
This was a PD session that followed our January Committee of the Whole meeting.
Sorry, I was away that meeting. Can you tell me what the meeting, what the PD session was?
We looked-
What was the background of the PD session?
Yes, we looked at a couple of the areas from the Board Self-Assessment Survey. The results of the survey were shared with the group in advance and we highlighted which areas we would focus on in that session.
Okay, so there was no actual PD session. It was just a conversation about the results from the board's self-evaluation.
Sure, however, however you want to call that, it was for our own professional development.
Okay, moving on to policy bylaw and governance, Robbie?
The committee has not met since last committee of the whole. We will be meeting shortly.
Thank you. And, okay, the Trustees Professional Development Planning Committee, is anyone from that committee present? Because I know that Navid is not here this evening. Carol, I believe you're on that committee?
Yes, Navid is the chair and there has not been a meeting since the end of this year.
Okay, thank you. And the Financial Advocacy Standing Committee and Joanna?
Okay, thanks. So yeah, with the assistance of Roxanna and, and now some of the reports that we've seen today, the committee is working on updating the information that's found on the Fair Funding for HDSB website. We continue to gather more information that's budget-related so that we can develop some key strategies and messaging to community partners and funders. Just to remind fellow trustees and anybody else interested, and I'm hoping that community stakeholders will take interest in this, the Fair Funding for HDSB website can be found under the Board of Trustees area in the HDSB website under Correspondence from the Chair tab. And that's where you'll find a lot of the information pertaining to our budget, our shortfalls, and some comparative data. So the committee will continue to meet and update on information and come up with some strategies and information sharing. And certainly, tonight's report from Ian on the update on physical infrastructure state of repair and Roxanna's budget presentation helped to shed some light on the issues that we need to bring forward and where advocacy is much needed. So thank you for those.
Thank you very much. We are now up to trustee questions of clarification. Do we have any questions this evening from trustees? Seeing none. Do we have any trustee news to share? Community updates? Anything super special going on? I know that we have the Halton Skills Competition coming up. Hope lots of trustees are going to be showing up for that this year. It was a lot of fun last year.
Sorry, yes, it's worthwhile noting that on February 20, at Georgetown District High School from 6:30 to 8:30, there is a session on the anti-sex trafficking information for the community. I believe that this has been, this session of training has been held in other areas of Halton region, and it is now up in the hills for the community members of North Halton to take advantage of coming in and, and receiving this information and address. So looking forward to seeing lots of folks out to that session on February 20, this Thursday.
Thank you very much. And with that, that concludes trustee news. We move into private session. Margot, would you like to make a motion to go into private session?
Of course I will.
Is there any discussion regarding going into private session? Seeing none, we are now in private session. Thank you.
Thank you, we're back in public session and as our agenda is exhausted I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.